You were there, you weren't here.
You weren't all the way in, we had.
I was on my, I was on the deal, I just couldn't see y'all.
Okay. Uh, it's Mr. Court come to orders Tuesday 12th day of May 2020, now 3:00 AM County courtroom, all the commissioners are present virtually, and the county attorney Scott Peel. And we'll go right into, uh, Ryan Hozapple is going to leave some prayer and pledge, Ryan.
Lord, thank you for this day and, and thank you for all the people and the staff and the persons out in the community and our first responders that are fighting this. We, we pray that as we move back into this transition, that you'll be with us and all those business owners and everyone that needs to get back to normal. And that you keep us all safe and well, in Jesus' name. Now the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we had no citizens comments came in, uh, I asked Bill Bowles, uh, yesterday afternoon, there was a, uh, conference call with the governor, uh, for the mayors and judges, and he gave us some information. And Bill took good notes, I asked him to kind of summarize.
Good morning, Commissioners, Scott. Um, yesterday, the governor released details of how the state of Texas is going to handle the distribution of the federal fund. The numbers that we got were that the state of Texas received 11.24 billion dollars from around one of the, the CARES Act. Of that, 5.06 billion is earmarked for local governments, counties and states. The Treasury directly deposited 3.2 billion dollars into the accounts of six cities and 12 counties that have over 500,000 residents in them population. The remaining 1.85 billion is to be divided up between the rest of the cities and counties in the state of Texas based on distribution formula of $55 per capita of residents. We must apply for that money. When our application is vetted, we will get a lump sum 20% payment from TDM directly to the county for those residents in the unincorporated county area. The remaining 80% of the grant funds allocated to Chambers County will be on a reimbursement for eligible costs basis. It may only be used to reimburse eligible direct COVID-19 expenses. Cannot be used to supplant where it falls to make up the difference for income deficits from reduced sales tax income or anything else. Again, this was released to us yesterday afternoon at four?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, so details are still yet to be fully released. The judge has already executed the paperwork for us to apply and that paperwork has been submitted to the state. So we'll let you know what happens when it happens. Any questions, sir?
That's not our agenda, so I really don't want to get into.
Yes.
All right, Mary Beth's going to give you update on COVID-19.
Morning.
Morning.
Hey, so just wanted to give a quick update on, uh, cases in Chambers County. We are, uh, holding steady at, we have 50 cases, we have 41 recovered. So that means we have nine active cases currently in Chambers County. We have one in the hospital, we currently have tested 1,001. That means that we have facilitated a 1,001, uh, test here locally, that is through our drive-through as well as, uh, through tests through our local healthcare providers, hospitals, and possibly even some at the drive-throughs, maybe like at Stallworth or through other healthcare providers in our, in our region. We currently have 32 persons under investigation and 28 under monitoring. We today have two testing sites open in the county through, uh, the Texas Military Division and Centrak have set up those two testing sites. One of them is at Winnie Stoll Park and the other one is at Mercy Gate Church in Mont Belvieu. So, uh, Mont Belvieu, the city of Mont Belvieu is taking the lead on the Mercy Gate site. Uh, we really appreciate that effort and we've had conference calls all week long as well as, um, Chambers County is taking the lead on the site over at Winnie Stoll Park. There's been a great collaboration all along with all the entities in getting these, uh, two testing sites set up and we're glad that they're here. We know that as time goes on, our numbers may go up a little bit because Texas is reopening a bit as well as more people are getting tested. And that's sort of the containment strategy all along is to get more people tested as well as to do, uh, contact tracing. And we are fortunate in our county that we've had the ability to contact trace all along. We've brought more staff in and been able to do that. Also, a big thank you to everyone, all the partners for asking the right questions and getting the job done and just for a great collaborative effort within the county and the region and the state and just for the leadership, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we'll be on the conference call today too, so for questions, thanks.
Yeah, if you have questions, read one of those, just call us at, um, 2440 and we'll hook you up with them. Okay. Citizens comments, 11, discuss, consider request for the county to defer hotel occupancy tax payments for 90 days, Mr. Peel.
Uh, yes, Judge, uh, as you know, and as you see in your packet, there was a request by some uh, on the, uh, east side of the county where they had asked for a deferment of the, uh, hotel occupancy tax. And, um, again, you know, it's, it's the hotel occupancy tax only places an obligation to pay that tax when they have customers and it has been pointed out that to stop collecting that tax is, is kind of a, uh, takes away some of the means that the county has to draw in more business. But again, other cities and other counties are doing this. I provided, uh, probably yesterday evening, a draft very similar to the Brazos County, uh, ho- uh, hotel, uh, occupancy tax deferment. So if y'all were interested, of course, it is legal for y'all to do so. Again, this was requested for, uh, y'all's consideration. And if y'all have, um, any questions or specific ways that you wish to implement this, you can. I would point out that the, uh, Buddha example that was provided is probably the most beneficial, uh, program in the state of Texas. They found the one that not only has a deferment option, but also a forgiveness program as their example. I will tell you, that was the only one that I found out of about 20, which actually had a forgiveness. The other, uh, score or so all had just a deferral option. So at y'all's pleasure, if y'all make a decision and have terms that you would like to have me insert, I'll be more than happy to do so. And as I said, I sent a, uh, a rough draft yesterday, um, out regarding this, uh, item, so feel free to discuss and let me know what y'all's pleasure is.
God, I, I have a question. You know, um, I've stayed in the motel several times and I recall, um, that island being separate from the deal. I mean, they, they'd tell you how much a hotel room is on there and then taxes and everything added to it. You know, could be additional seven or eight percent. But, you know, it doesn't appear to me that if we, if we waive the hotel motel tax, a person is going to get the benefit from it, it's the person staying there. Not the hotel, that's they're wanting us to refund the tax that they've already collected.
Well, again, my understanding is they still have to collect the tax. If I understood, um, the intent, it just defers having to make the payment to the county.
Well, they get held on to it and not pay.
They get to hold on to it, what they're obligated to pay the county until later in the year. So my understanding was they still have to collect it.
So would it be safe to say it's basically a loan?
Yes, and i- in a way. But again, uh, other local governments in the state of Texas and around the nation, of course, are presenting this. It may be of interest, I went on the, uh, Texas Hotel Association's website and they frankly had a very lengthy list of options for all of their customers as to what were some of the things that they were trying to do and were making recommendations. And the local hotel occupancy tax deferral, if it was on their website as one of the, uh, uh, overall plans for their organization, I didn't see it, so it's kind of interesting that a, uh, a larger organization, um, wasn't maybe necessarily, uh, raising this issue or promoting this issue. But it is being done by local governments and so it doesn't waive the tax, it doesn't keep people from having to pay the tax. My understanding is it just makes their deferral 60 days, 90 days, 180 days, uh, before having to make that payment to, uh, uh, the county, so.
Well, the way I read, uh, I read the, the request was they wanted to keep the money and not, you know, be basically get forgiven the, uh, the amount and that, did, did you read it differently than that?
Well, like I said, that, uh, as you may see on page eight, the still beautiful hotel occupancy tax payment, emergency deferral and forgiveness program. That forgiveness program was the only example I found of forgiveness of the hotel occupancy tax by my searches. Many cities and a few counties were offering a deferral of payments until later, but this was the only example of forgiveness that I found. Uh, on the agenda today, uh, of course, y'all can consider under the umbrella, and if y'all want to come back, uh, with a different, uh, item for forgiveness, we certainly can. But up for, uh, the draft that I have for you and for consideration today is really a, a deferral program, not a relinquishment of the obligation to pay these taxes in the county when they have customers.
Billy's back.
Yeah, lost you guys there for a minute.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was saying. And it doesn't matter to me, I.
It, it didn't lay out anything about, I mean, with them using this money to help retain employees or what they're going to use it for. The only time they collect it is when they have people there anyway and it's not part of their operating budget. They shouldn't be figuring it that way anyway.
There are, that is one way to look at it, certainly, as been pointed out previously, it's, uh, basically a, a deferment to where they can loan themselves that money and put off their obligation till later. Um, and they can use it for whatever needs they have as their funds are tight. It still, uh, counts on basically the expectation that business will pick up and they will be able to, uh, uh, use some of their profits aside from this tax obligation to cover the deferment, uh, amounts, so.
Well, we have to take each one of these items one by one, I mean, because the way you vote on it, I mean, is this going to do all in one blanket deal?
How do you mean by each item one by one?
Well, it is multiple points here, one through, um, four different ones there on it, so.
Let me go back to the top of the agenda item.
I, I'm just talking about in the, in the agreement, in, in their letter, is what I'm talking about.
Those four points that they might.
The four point, the four bullet points in the, in the deal.
Well, I could, you know, I mean, now, the judge has already made a, um, resolution that we're no law, we're not going to support any of the, any more of the, uh, particip- we were doing on the festivals and stuff, so which is what that money, uh, some of that money is used for, uh, try to put more heads in the bed. But, uh, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't have a, you know, I know the auditor went through a pretty lengthy process, audited those hotels and catching them up on, you know, them getting behind. Uh, it's been a, I can't remember, do you remember that, Jimmy?
Yeah, they're still paying, my understanding, right, Scott, we talked about this?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Uh, in, uh, the one that was paying off, um, the taxes that they previously didn't pay, they're still on that payment plan.
That, that is correct. And, um, you may note.
I see this would probably reflect that deal too, if, if they're paying on a prior, a prior hotel motel debt.
So in this, in this deal, it said they had to be in good standing, so.
Right, right, the one from Buddha is the only one that I saw that actually had an application process. The other examples that I saw on the internet were basically a blanket deferral, uh, regardless of your prior, uh, status and, and anything else. Um, but yes, I, I did appreciate that from the city of Buddha that it actually had a, uh, an application and you had to be in good standing before, um, some of those terms applied. So gentlemen, generally speaking, I will tell you that whatever you would like to do without looking at this, uh, four-part wishlist that is on page, uh, if, if that's on page, uh, six and seven or seven and eight. There is a request for the deferment of the occupancy tax, of course, that is, uh, fairly easy for y'all to do and up for y'all's, uh, decision today. To decrease energy per usage rates for 90 days, um, I'm not sure how how that would be for Commissioners Court, uh, changing the late penalty for the occupancy tax payment. You know, if you wish to incorporate in this deferment, a, uh, discussion of the penalty tax, that's kind of a separate issue, but it could be brought in and, and listed under it if so desired. But again, number four, the 2020 property tax rates, um, mid-budget year, uh, this might not be the time to make a uh, obligation or, or commit to anything, uh, and just being taken under advisement. So what I had put before you today, although there was this request for prongs, was basically to consider a deferment if you so chose. And if you choose to, then we can go from there as to what all you want in it and what the terms are to include possibly even incorporating, um, a discussion of, of, uh, late penalty, um, terms, uh, for what you feel might be equitable. So this is really a punt to y'all to decide what you want to do.
So you're saying this is a deferment, not a forgiveness?
That's correct.
It's whatever you want it to be.
But if you want it to be a forgiveness, we can come up with that language, I will tell you, as I said.
So their issue is their occup- occupancies down, right? And that's, they're not collecting much tax anyway if their occupancies down.
Right, yeah, you know, Judge, if we go by what BUNA did in theirs in their application, they actually require them to show how much they are actually off on their occupancy and, uh, you know, demonstrate it going through the application process like BUNA did. So I mean, you know, if we wanted to set some criteria, we could, but I do know for a fact that the occupancy of hotel motels is down nationwide and Winnie, the east Chambers County is a rural area anyhow. And I seriously believe these companies, businesses are hurting and, uh, you know, I think if deferring taxes is going to help them out, that, you know, is it's much better for us to defer that tax than to have a business fail, go out of business.
I agree.
Yeah, I did too, I think we all probably agree with that. So what do you?
Hey Jimmy, do, do all these hotels participate in this letter? I mean, it was just, their names are written down, there's no, uh, signature or anything came with it, or do they just, somebody drafted, just put everybody's name on it? Do you know?
I don't know if you're asking me, but this.
Well, I mean, I, 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 they just have the, uh, hotels.
I know, I saw it here.
And, and I, did they include anything, did they include anything on 146?
This is apparently the Winnie Hotels.
So this is just the Winnie Hotels?
Yeah, and, and we need to, we need to incorporate everything within the county if we do this.
Yeah, I think you need to be, you know, you're going to treat them all the same, I would think. Of course, that, they're in the city of Mount Bellevue too, though. You know, they make, they may collect that there, I don't know, I mean, I'm not real familiar with hotel motel tax. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, the city does. Who's going to manage that? And if we give them a 60-day deferral, who's going to make sure they come back and give us money to do us after the fact? The tax office, and that's where it's receded there, I know. I don't know, I'm just kind of worried about who's going to manage it.
Good question.
Scott, you volunteered? You volunteered, Commissioner? So i- if I'm hearing y'all correctly, do wish to move forward and perhaps, uh, voting to approve a deferment of the taxes, maybe not necessarily the forgiveness, which of course would be the simplest thing, and then once y'all pass it, we look at the implementation after the fact, uh, of y'all's order. But some of the things, of course, that you, uh, have seen is those orders start perhaps in March and you could theoretically backdate it for the beginning of the pandemic and you can have it go through, uh, the period that you, uh, seek to have it applied to. Some people, like I said, have gone through March through June. Oh, I've got a treasurer who is willing to assist me in telling me how she could make this work. If I understand that look correctly, maybe not.
Yes, so I relate to you, so you know that all of the hotel motels in Chambers County, they submit the hotel motel tax directly to my office. So as you guys stated, there's various, there's more than just the ones that we. So we're already collecting the funds, I'm the one that's one that laid, so if we come on board and do the default.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Whittington said that she would be the one who, uh, tracks those, uh, uh, payments just like she does now and she would be the one to, uh, manage the timeliness and of course, uh, make sure notices go out if they, uh, uh, fail to make payments pursuant to the deferral terms.
That's quarterly payments, right?
Uh, and yeah, I think they would make it countywide instead of, so.
Is quarter- quarterly payments correct?
Is it quarterly payments they make to you in your office? Monthly payments? And they only submit quarterly payments if they're in the threshold of like 500 or less per quarter? So.
So Scott, you drafted a, uh, resolution, huh? And sent it out to us, is that what we would need to, uh, approve?
Well, what I sent was a, a draft order. Yeah, so, um, I, I don't believe a resolution necessarily is in place, I didn't see one. So, uh, this order referring to the negative impact of COVID-19, we passed our hotel occupancy tax effective September 1 of 1995. I of course would have to get with Aaron or Nikki to figure out exactly what our current percentage is, but whatever it is, is what applies. Y'all would need to decide on what dates you wish to make, uh, the parameters and how long after the end of the applicable dates you're going to allow people to make the payment. From the example that I provided you, I believe there were a several month period where the hotel occupancy tax was going to be considered and those obligations, I believe it might have been, uh, March through the beginning of the summer, those payments would then be due by December 31st, by the end of the year. But again, th- these are entirely, uh, variables that are up to y'all's discretion and what you want to put in there. 60-day and 90-day were very common deferral periods of the applicable, uh, uh, range of months for which the hotels are being hit the hardest, so. Your discretion.
And, and you started in March?
Others had, uh, they passed theirs within the last four weeks and some of their start dates were, uh, March. Um, and so clearly we had our disaster declaration, March 12th, the first one. And so just as a starting point, that might be a good, uh, uh, position. And then many of them are going through the beginning or middle of the summer as the coverage period. And then the payment would be due 60 to 90 days after the end of, of those. But some, as I mentioned, do go as far out as the last day of the year, December 31st.
Well, if we were to, if we were to make this deferment and then, uh, come back and re- and readdress it, we have a little more information and we defer the tax. We still not, we're not, we're still not deferring the obligation, I mean, it still would be the obligation there, so.
Obligation still exists, the, uh, uh, but it's just deferring the obligation to pay till later in the year.
Well, that's my motion to make the deferment for that 90-day period for the, uh, from the start of whenever that was in March, this thing.
March 12?
March 12.
March 12th, that, till, till 90 days and then we'd readdress it and we were seeing it at that time. That's my motion.
Second, Mark. Okay, motion back of Mr. Nelson, second back of Mr. Combs.
I got a question for clarification, if it starts March 12th, when do you want the, uh, uh, final date of this period?
Well, it's going to be 90 days, but what, what was brought my attention is we have two of them in bankruptcy, uh, what do we do about those two?
They're not eligible if they're not in good standing.
They're not in good standing, so they're not eligible.
Well, wait, i- i- if they're paying their, if they're still paying their taxes, they're good standing with us. If they're paying the hotel motel tax. I know, this is, it's, it's kind of, I actually told Scott not to bring it to us, I thought we would. But I'm okay with this considering it.
So, I mean, I think we need to, we need to mention those two, I think it's Hampton and La Quinta that are, uh, they're making bankruptcy payments, are we going to defer that as well?
Making bankruptcy payments to us or to the?
Yes, to us. For back taxes.
Billy, you have something?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, you know, if they're trying to pull out, they're in good standards and they're making their payments that we made an agreement to make with them, I don't know why we would exclude them for this, it's just putting more of a hardship on them.
I can include them in my motion, I mean, that's, uh, that's 90 days and where we can revisit it.
You want to table it and get more information? On who's in good standing, who's not in good standing?
I think, I think that they, if they're making monthly payments, I mean, they're, they're probably already behind. I mean, even the ones that are in good standing, they don't, they don't have the funds to pay right now. I mean, that's, I, I'm assuming that it, I mean, I, I may be wrong on that.
To have to be in good standing qualify, correct?
The only example that I found was Buddha that required being in good standing. All of the other documents that I saw, the examples were blanket and covered everybody.
So Gary, your most, your motion, you wanted to say in good standing. If that, I think you say that, Scott could say, yes, they're in good standing, they, they qualify, if not, then they don't.
So the ones that are in bankrupt to continue, have to continue to pay.
If they qualify, they qualify, if they don't, they don't. Like that.
Yeah, that'd be my motion.
You want to amend your motion to add?
In good stand.
In good standing. Mr. Combs, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, got amended motion and amended second by Nelson and Combs.
So, sorry, I still need to clarify this for y'all. If the starting date is between, uh, March 12th, then the period for which taxes collected may be deferred. Most of the samples out there have said, here's a three, four, five-month period. And then after that period is over, taxes are due 60, 90, 120 days later. So what I'm saying is if you wish to have this period where their taxes are being co- collected but being deferred payment for, uh, 60, 90, 120 days after that period, I've got the start date of that period, but I don't have the end date of that period.
You said 90 days, that.
Well, that's 90 days after the period. So, sorry, let me start over again. So the example that is out there for most local governments is from a period from March to June, those taxes which are being collected will not be paid to the local government for 90 days after the fact. Therefore, it's not an open-ended period, it's not a, uh, 90 days after, uh, March, they're due, you know, in June and, and, and April, they're due in July. It's after this period is over, taxes are due this much after the fact, is most sample.
Well, okay, so I'm going to have to amend my motion a third time. I'm going to say, I'm going to say the 90-day period and then they have 90 days to pay the tax. I'm going to say, I'm going to say the ninety day period and then they have ninety days to pay the tax afterwards. And we may have to revisit it, but I mean.
Yes.
Of today, let's say that, and then depending on, I might have to have a second though.
But if I. Make sure we're clear, ninety day deferral and then ninety days to pay what was deferred. Is that your motion?
That's correct.
All right, so Billy, would you like to amend your second?
Yes, I'm okay with that, although looking at the order, you know, Scott had written it was to December thirty first. But I'm okay with ninety days.
Absolutely.
I think, I think when we get a better handle on what's going to happen, I mean, we're still, we're still in an unknown here with this partially back up. And it may be something we have to readdress and we, and that gives us an opportunity to readdress it a later date.
Yeah, sounds good. All right, any other questions? Those in favor? Oh, motion carries on the second amended motion and second, thank you. All right, one point two, discuss success of resolution to pay tribute to fallen officers and law enforcement officers in the Chambers County, the state of Texas, United States, there will be no moment at the memorial due to COVID nineteen this year. Lauren said she would really like to read the resolution, so Lauren.
Whereas the well-being of all people of the United States, the state of Texas and Chambers County is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance and dedication of our law enforcement officers. And whereas we rely on law enforcement officers to keep Chambers County safe, enforce our laws and respond in times of crisis. And whereas it is law enforcement officers who are ready to serve and protect even with their lives when necessary. And whereas four Chambers County peace officers have made that ultimate sacrifice. Sheriff John Light Frost, end of watch, November tenth, nineteen hundred. Deputy Constable Levi E. Oliver, end of watch, March fifth, nineteen thirty. Deputy Sheriff Dirk Ray Caneram, end of watch, October seventeenth, two thousand and four. Deputy Sheriff Shane Thomas Detwiler, end of watch, July thirteenth, two thousand and nine. And whereas we come together now to honor our Chambers County fallen officers and those officers across the state of Texas and our nation, whose lives have been taken in the line of duty. Now therefore be it resolved by the Chambers County Court, of the Commissioners Court of Chambers County, Texas, that we honor the memory of Sheriff Frost, Deputy Constable Oliver, Deputy Sheriff Caneram and Deputy Sheriff Detwiler, and express the gratitude of all of our citizens to their families for their dedication and service. And be it further resolved that we, the Commissioners Court of Chambers County, Texas, pay tribute to these fallen officers and all law enforcement officers in Chambers County, the state of Texas and the United States, protect us from evil and preserving all our freedoms. Passed and approved by the Commissioners Court of Chambers County on this twelfth day of May, two thousand, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Lauren. Motion by Nelson, second by Mr. Gass. Motion by the court, second by the court, how am I saying? Those in favor? Then motion carries.
Judge, can we, since we can't have a memorial, can we just have a moment of silence?
Yes, let's do that to remember that we've lost. Thank you. All right, one point three. Discuss, etc., approve the interloper agreement of Liberty County for the funding of one or more Liberty Chambers Community Supervision Corrections Department employees, great required documentation for TDCJ, CJD application process to wit proposed September one, twenty twenty, Chambers County CSCD creation date, Mr. Phil asked to take that to executive session.
Yes, sir, under personnel and consultation with attorney.
Yes, thank you. All right, five one and five two are tabled until Friday at two P M. We're going to call a special meeting, which, special meeting anyway. Approved consultant and engineering firm for Texas Water Development Board funds. So we will consider these two because anybody's meeting again on Wednesday and they requested that we table it till Friday. All right, consent, we'll start with precinct four. Anything on the consent agenda, precinct four, Billy?
Oh, gee, caught me off guard there. The only thing I have would be on item number five, job descriptions. Page one thirty and one thirty-two, that would be the deputy fire marshal and fire marshal. The pay grades, pay step grades are left off in blank, I was wondering why they were blanked.
Ryan, do you know what those are? The pay grade, I gotta pull it back out.
I thought they were twenty-four, four, I thought it was all.
I'd say he thought it was twenty-four, four, maybe they just didn't get put on the, the form. He's going to go get them and we'll come back. What else, Billy?
Oh, I've already done my homework, I've got all my questions answered ahead of time.
Good boy.
I would like to comment though, on item number twenty-one, they still have Larry George's name on there instead of Tyce, but I'm certain that would be corrected.
Okay, so number twenty-one needs to be corrected to add Commissioner Tyson on there. Anything else? All right, precinct three, Commissioner Nelson.
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of items on the approved capital projects and tax note activity for April, twenty twenty. Do we know yet what, what we're going to consider delaying on our capital projects? I know you've talked about it, but I don't, I haven't seen anything that shows what capital projects we're going to delay.
No, Gary, we hadn't, I thought we put something out on what projects we were delaying. Aaron said he sent an email out a while back and he said he would resend it, Gary.
Okay, and it has the projects we're going to delay?
Correct.
And the, the other thing is down here somewhere about additional office space. How much additional office space we're going to need, does that include the probation officers and the, I saw something about the district clerk and then the sheriff's office and then the, then the judge, so do we know how many, how many additional office spaces we're going to need?
Working on that, they not sure yet, but yeah, with the new judge coming in, the attorney's office is busting at the seams. Those are two main ones right now, but with January one, we're going to be really, oh, we're looking, I, I wanted to look at all options, including purchase something. So I really want to take that to executive session also. You don't understand what I'm talking about, but I'm going to talk about purchasing property without doing it in executive session.
Right. Okay, number sixteen, the approved, approved for bids for the maintenance contract on the Kilgoor Parkway lights. Thought the city of Baytown had a, a light department that was going to get the lights up and running. Does that misunderstand that or is that something, we're going to have to get somebody?
Yeah, Gary, what's going on on that? If you recall, back in January, I believe, or February, we had it on the agenda to give the lights over to Centerpoint Energy. Well, after a further review, Scott has determined that there's some legal problems with doing that. So as of now, what Cory is asking that we do is allow him to go out for bids to get a maintenance contract, to get the lights fixed and to maintain them at least through the end of this year. And after that, you know, we need to address it and look at trying to get a maintenance contract with a company that can service the lights. We don't have any equipment to even change the light bulb out or do anything. So we're looking to get a contract similar to what Centerpoint Energy does with, you know, North Houston Power and Pole.
Okay, do we have any, do we have any idea what kind of funding amount is going to need for this, Billy, or we just don't even know?
Well, that's why we want to go out for bids, that's all the item is, is to allow us to go out for bids to see what it is. You know, I think Centerpoint had thrown a number in, was it like ninety thousand dollars, Scott?
It was going to be over fifty thousand dollars to be certain. And so the, the main number that sticks out, of course, is, you know, one of the things that we had found out that wasn't in the original agreement was there was a verbal agreement to allow them to eat ninety thousand dollars worth of costs for adjusting the lights to be able to handle the LED components. But a- as the commissioner pointed out with it previously, I had been out of town at a conference and I believe y'all had approved the contract subject to the county attorney's approval, and unfortunately, I don't want to beat a horse into the ground, but there were legal issues and basically pointing out that the best way to go forward would be to hit the reset button, knowing it was going to be over fifty thousand dollars. Disposition of property rules and guidelines as well as the third issue, I can't remember at the moment, but it was best, it was going to be over fifty thousand was the full expectation of everyone. And so that's why this was seen as the best course moving forward.
Well, okay, thank you, Scott. The, the other item is eighteen, and I think you addressed it with the email this morning. It was about the taking over the road system of Mariport. It, original email I saw didn't have much protecting the county on the, assuming the responsibility of the roadways. So as long as they're up to our standard, I think your email that you sent out this morning addressed those, addressed those issues. I'll see, I, I think that was, that was the only items I had, Judge.
Okay, Gary, to answer your question on the deputy fire marshals, it's a group twenty-four. It was just, it's on the payroll change, it's just an oversight that it wouldn't put on the job description.
All right, thank you. Hey, can I, can I make a comment on Commissioner Nelson and make sure I clarify something here? Item eighteen is not to accept Mariport roads into our maintenance system. I believe that would be restricted to EW four once it's constructed by Mariport. Is that not right, Scott?
Okay, so this memorandum of understanding, of course, is illustrating everybody's good faith intent to move forward and reach formal agreements in the future, which of course takes more time and, and we know weeks to get those details and offer, counteroffer back and forth. So what this memorandum of understanding does is illustrates that y'all have previously illustrated through open court a desire to transfer the hundred and forty foot existing east-west right of way through Ameriport's property for this east-west corridor. And Ameriport is willing to build a road for our altered, but considered east-west corridor to our specifications. And so this incorporates basically a property interest swap intent in the future and the absorption into the county roadway system will occur after they build roads to our specification and will basically go from Highway ninety-nine along the east and southeast side and south side of their development and then connect to the adjacent property to the west where the county roadway is intended to connect, going further westbound into the county. So not a binding agreement, this illustrates what everybody's intent from the county and Ameriport is at this time. And we will have the formal documents for y'all in the next two to four weeks, hopefully, making this more concrete. But this is what could be done on short notice, is illustrating everybody's intent. But it is not binding, but it also does not incorporate all of their roads. A roadway which comes in from Highway ninety-nine, goes south and then goes west at the appropriate time when the county engineer and the Commissioners Court choose to accept it per our current policy accepting, you know, subway, subway subdivision roads into our maintenance system.
And that's EW four, right?
EW four.
All right, other questions? Gary, anything else?
Well, you know, I just read the, the motion, I mean, the, the deal on the agenda and it, and it appeared to me that it's, that they were, you know, potentially requesting us to take all the roads in there by the way that read. But then I saw the memorandum of understanding this morning and it basically brought it down to EW four. And I just, I just, not that I have a problem taking those roads into the road system, I just want to make sure we've got some recourse there to say, okay, we would do it, but they'd have to meet the standards, county engineer and, and up to the county specs.
And just so you know, some of the options that are available to the county is something we're, we're currently doing for a different segment of road, which is, you know, if a road gets built and, you know, one of the options that we have is a maintenance bond to allow for several years of basically insurance to make sure the road that we're accepting doesn't end up being subpar and needing county resources to fix. So there are options, but at this time, like you pointed out, this is intended strictly to illustrate we're wanting to eventually accept a portion of the roads that would be on this property into the county maintenance system when the time is right and subject to y'all's approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, Gary, is that it? You done?
Oh, I, I, you got my stuff.
All right, precinct two, Mark.
Judge, what happens when you go third, everybody hit my area, so I'm good, Judge.
Good, all right, precinct one, Commissioner Gore.
Hi Judge, backup number sixteen, is the city of Baytown going to take these lights over sooner or later? Or are we going to continue doing the maintenance and work on them?
Baytown will not take them over unless Baytown annexes that area.
Took the annexed, then they'll take over the road maintenance and the lights, Billy?
Probably, keeping in mind that the county can still own roads within the corporate limits.
Right.
Okay, we still own right of way and everything, those lights own our right of way, is that, is that private right of way?
No, it's our right of way, it's county right of way.
Yeah, there are lights.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I would just, I mean, people always ask, hey, does the county put up lights in the county and the answer is no, but, and that's because, I mean, people had saw this here and they'd asked me about it. So I mean, I'm just covering it.
And we never could have put up lights, of course, we never have built new roads either from scratch, at least for years and years, so.
I think they snuck that by on us, Judge.
Commissioner snagged it there.
I, I've just, I've just covered it, Judge, because I mean, I get questions about it all the time.
Commissioner Gore, I can tell you, I tried to get the city of Baytown to take them over and they laughed at me.
I understand, heck, man, why, why would they want to take them over and we're going to pay to maintain them?
Yeah.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Judge, I mean, let me apologize, you know, the, we were going to get an update on the, it said on number nine, county EMS. Is there, is Ron there to do that or are you not going to do that? I just, you know, I mean, I.
Oh, he's, he's at the testing site today over in my Bellevue.
Okay, well, I just noticed, and they talked about the, you know, the, the. For, for the EMS was down, but you know, he's anticipating an increase in volume.
You want to go ahead and vote on the consent, then we can listen to him. We still go to number nine if you'd like to, if you're ready to vote.
Still got, Jimmy Gore still got, you have any more, Jimmy?
I'm good, I mean, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Gass, you know, further questions, those in favor? Motion carries, and Ryan is trying to get Ryan on the phone, so.
Did we hear anything about maybe getting some assistance for that Jeep down weekend that's coming up, weekend after next?
It's this weekend.
Is it this weekend?
Yes, and no, I don't think the state's providing any assistance due to COVID nineteen. We're going to be ready to help if necessary, but Ron, we'll get Ron on the phone, he can.
There he is, I'm speaker.
All right, Ron. We're on your item for EMS update, Commissioner Nelson had the first question, Commissioner Nelson.
Yeah, I just, I just noticed on, you, you mentioned that your call volume. Yeah, I just, I just noticed on, you, you mentioned that your call volume was down, but you anticipated it to increase. Is there a reason, a reason for that?
The nationally call volume right now is down an average of 25% because of COVID-19. People just aren't calling 911. They're not, they're not wanting to go to the hospitals. They're not wanting to go get, they're basically doing, they're going to the local doctors and stuff like that. Call 911 is awesome. The, basically on all of the top calls with, you know, state regional EMS directors and the EMTS and everybody is, the anticipation we have is that once COVID settles down, once people are kind of settled down on the COVID-19 and they get back to their normal lives, our call volume is probably going to peak at some point and make up for the lack of call volume that's actually last three to four months. Because, I mean, it already has on the weekends. Our call volume is actually almost double what it has been for the last two and a half months on the weekends because more people are getting out and going and doing things, going to parks and going to fish. So we're just kind of anticipating and preparing for that increase. And even if we get back to our normal call volume, and we go, and a lack of training day combined last year, for example, we're down about 25%. So that's going to increase our call volume by, on average, of about three to 42 calls a month that we're going to have to deal with once that, that, once the COVID stuff kind of settles down. And so we're actually anticipating a 10 to 15% increase on top of that. If you look at the beaches, Gales County SC2, Gales County Health Authority, Porter Ranges, the other coastal counties, which we don't have as much beaches, but the other coastal counties around us, their call volume is, is almost doubled on the weekends because of all the people going to the beach and getting out and about because they're used to getting stuck in the house for the last few months.
Well, I would think too that the accidents have gone down as well because of less driving.
Yes, the, the MBAs and stuff have been, they have been reduced significantly because of less driving. So that's another thing to take into consideration with all the traffic on the chain, the summer travel, you know, during the summer months, our call volume usually peaks anyway. Higher during the summer months than it is during the winter months, just stuff. So what we anticipate that, we have the staffing for it and we have the, we, we, we're, we're ready for that. We're just, in the pre-planning stages for it, just want to make sure you guys were updated in case it did happen.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so Commissioner Gore had a question about Jeep weekend.
I just wanted to, I know, I mean, I, I knew it was a long shot to get anything from the state because of the COVID. What are we doing to, I know they're wanting us to be there, assist them down there. Are we staffing up this weekend or what, what's going to be our response?
So we've been working with the director, Doug Saunders down at Gales County SC2, the Gales County Health Authority, which is basically Gales County EMS and some of the OEM from Gales County. We're going to have a makeshift DOC set up at the Crystal Beach Fire Station. We have a large hospital type triage area with cops and medics that are going to be staffing that, that are going to be at the Crystal Beach Fire Station as well. And we're going to have two triage points on each side of the beach, one in Bolivar and one on the High Island side as well. There are a mix there. And then we're bringing in additional ambulance. There are actually going to be a total of nine ambulance on the beach starting Thursday night. They'll be there through Sunday afternoon where they usually only have three. Winnie EMS is going to staff their second truck so that their second truck is staffed for the full weekend. And we're going to basically have our, our normal rotation, our two trucks and supervisors on duty. However, we're going to kind of initiate a voluntary on-call system this weekend. So if it does get that crazy, some of the medics live in town and volunteered to come in and staff the third or fourth truck if need be. So if we need to, we will bring them in and staff the third or fourth truck to provide additional assistance. However, we're not going to just staff them and then not use them. We're going to make sure that we're only staffing it if we actually need it. And basically the plan is if something does happen, since our trucks are an hour from the beach, boys are going to send their trucks down and we're going to shift our trucks over to cover Tambers County while Winnie is down helping the beach. It's kind of a plan we have in place.
Okay, sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from Ron? Ron, how's the testing site going?
How far? They had about four or five coming this morning. We actually had several that showed up that had, had signed up online. However, they had been recontacted back, so they think there might have been something wrong with the online tree. So hopefully we'll get more people that are showing up to sign up that just didn't, didn't get through the process. But everything's going pretty good. It's been a steady flow of traffic. I think we've had, I think eight or nine so far.
So is that four or five? And, and, and they got through the process now?
Yeah, so they came in and they pulled them to the side, had them call the, the number to the call center and they got them registered, gave them a number and they got them through the testing site without a problem.
Okay, well, good. And that's at Mercy Gate, in case anyone didn't know. There's also one in Winnie, at Winniestole Park. And both of them are today from nine until five, six, nine to six. Okay, and we got, there's plenty of spots open. So if you know anybody that feels like they need to be tested, have them go through the screen. All right, anything else for Ron? Okay, thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, it's 10:32 AM. We're going to go to executive session on 13. On 19.
17.
17. And then under executive session 20.1, discuss consider acquisition of real property for official county use and improvement. 20.2, discuss consider request for counter remedial action related to personal damages occurring on county property. Point three, discuss consider status update for potential litigation related to county employment complaints. All right, so we're going to take a quick break. And let's give 10 minutes to come back at, let's say 10:45, we'll come back into executive session.
And we'll be moving into a private channel.
We'll be moving into a private. I got Austin sitting right here. It gets into private.
Yes, sir. I'm going to go ahead and put y'all into it right here whenever we break. Anybody watching the live stream will just see it, like a we'll be right back kind of message. And, and then this should be seamless for you guys on your end. And then we'll also double check and make sure that nothing that shouldn't be live on the YouTube stream is, make sure that nothing's going out that shouldn't.
Okay, so it's 10:33 AM. We will recess to exec.
Judge, real quick. Reading off what we're going to executive session for, I may have missed it, but did you say 1.3? You did? Okay, thank you.
1.3, yeah. Yeah.
I hadn't gotten an email yet.